I'd like to open the special meeting at 3:43. And just noting that we have councillor O'Neill and councillor Hancock online. And we will just adjourn for a minute till we get some paperwork sorted. Thank you. So we'll reconvene the meeting at 4:02. And just a reminder that we have councillor O'Neill and councillor Hancock online. So 3.1 Roma Rugby Union Football Club request for assistance, which was formerly L3, which we laid on the table at the last ordinary meeting. If I could have the date of that call. You've got it there. Up the 11th of September for further information, which we all now have. Does anyone have any questions before we move on? Councillor Vincent?
I'm just wondering why the recommendation includes a contingency, considering that it's not our project, why we are thinking about a contingency?
Through the mayor councillor Vincent, just allowed it for, in case any last minute requests come from the club in the next few months ahead of February, that they call staff and require extra assistance for their project. And it might be timely, I suppose, over the Christmas, New Year break time. Just allowing some extra funds in case they do have any last minute requests.
Can I have one more? With the Santos Festival of Rugby budget that we're thinking of taking the funds from, how much is in that budget and is it needed now in 25, 26?
So there's $22,000 in that budget and we don't need it this financial year. We will meet with the club and/or Santos representatives at the end of this year to see what they may require and put that request in for 26, 27 budget as the event will be held in September next year.
Anybody else got any questions? Councillor Davis?
Thank you. And sorry about, it's a lot to unpack and what's contained in the report. My question was around a few things. So the cricket has agreed to the removal of the pitch, not currently used. Conditional on reinstatement of their clubhouse is not upgraded by 2027, which is 15 months, which is not that far away. What support has the cricket club wanted in that regard?
Through mayor councillor Davis. So we've spoken to cricket. They have received a letter from the football club with that request to remove the cricket pitch. In principle, I would say they're supportive of the pitch being removed because they say they don't utilise it. They are looking for support from footy and council to, they've got three priorities. The first being the irrigation and drainage of their fields, which council have received a grant through and also offered support in the budget for that. So they are appreciative and we are working together for that project. Their second priority is lighting. So when future grants come about, we've said to them, we'll work with you to look for funding for the lighting. And thirdly, there is the clubhouse, is their third priority. The cricket club are keen to work with council for those three priorities in seeking funding. But they have verbally said that they are supportive for the football club to remove the cricket pitch for this project.
On the proviso that their clubhouse and is, yes, but which is third in the list after lighting? Or is it side by side?
Can I just come in there? I don't think the word clubhouse is right in that context. I think they mean oval.
I think they mean complex.
I'm sure they mean oval, given what we've applied for, yeah.
So the whole three items in 15 months?
Yep. They would like to to walk away, I suppose, feeling that council is supporting them and the football club is supporting them to get their grounds up to scratch as well, if they are walking away from potential lighting and this cricket pitch.
So if they don't get their area upgraded in time, they request preference at the pitch back so they can utilise the lights, existing lights?
Correct.
So what would be the cost through you of reinstating the cricket pitch if we had to? Because as councillor Davis said, 2027 is not that far away. So this could be another cost that we have to bear.
I think the request would go to the football club to reinstate the pitch.
Just to give you some idea, we do have $140,000 at the moment in grants and council funding for the cricket club. Just as of Monday of this week, the Australian Cricket Infrastructure Funding Grant was sent to council. The Cricket Association have also applied for $100,000 gambling benefit fund grant. And to add a little bit further to that, as of today, the latest round of 35,000 of gambling community benefit fund grants have been opened and the cricket club will be applying for grants with the assistance of the council staff to get some support as far as going for those grants. So there is in the vicinity of $180,000 worth of grants that have been applied for, as well as the $140,000 that is actually on the table.
Councillor Davis?
Thank you. And that $140,000 councillor Flynn is for irrigation as per our budget?
We have to talk to the CEO about that. I'm not, for upgrading of the oval, whether it's irrigation or levelling, not totally sure.
So, and if you could just step me through what the recommendation states about the stormwater management plan? Obviously, that's how that they're going to deal with stormwater. Flood survey is the impact of the works on our flood levels. Can you tell me what the survey is for?
Through the mayor. Survey essentially is to help inform the stormwater management plan. So the club's already done some initial survey, more for the earthworks and levelling. However, the survey works is to help inform the stormwater management plan to understand where to drain the water. It will be an expectation of operational works requirement to have a stormwater management plan, particularly given there'll be referrals to, likely to be referrals to Main Roads, Queensland Rail. And they would be expecting as part of that application to have a stormwater management plan. We can't just prepare a stormwater management plan without the survey. It needs to be done to then inform where the stormwater goes.
So that's the survey of the grounds?
Correct, yeah. And it extends, if it was just the grounds, we probably could use what's been done today. The trouble is it's got to extend into the road reserve and down the drain in front of the highway there so that we can demonstrate to the state government how the stormwater is going to be managed on that site.
And who would carry this survey out?
Through the mayor. We would just expect a local surveyor to do that works. We've got the quotes that have, the numbers that have been provided there have been based off a quote from a local surveyor.
Yep, thank you. My last question is around if we are, if the allowance for in-kind assistance, what are we not going to achieve, given that, you know, we do have a full operational work plan? What are we putting on the back burner to go and deliver for the union club?
I'm happy to provide a response there, mayor.
Thank you.
Thank you. If you recall councillor, in the briefing last week and the initial request, what we've done is we've scaled back what we think we can offer. And so what I'd say is that we should be able to maintain existing services and deliver this in-kind request. If it was as per the original request, we had flagged that there would be potential operational impacts. But we're at a position with this one where we feel comfortable that we can maintain delivery of all their services.
Thank you.
Councillor Vincent?
Just after the rugby club were in the other day, they removed, you know, that they said that they could do the fence removal and things like that. And I know director Dean did touch on the, you know, this was up to a maximum value, but we've put up to a maximum value, including the fence removal and then it added the additional contingency. It just seems like we're just counting all of what they've asked for upfront. Just, was there any commentary, I suppose, like why we've, because that figure that we've put in there up to the maximum actually includes all that they've asked for, besides what's already been completed?
No, they did have, they did have removal of the cricket pitch and we sort of spoke about that one. The question was asked of the group, you know, can, do you have the gear to actually do the fence? And there was, they said they could actually, if that was not approved by council, they could look at their resources there. So if that council fit by that one.
We're only talking about that little white fence.
$4,273 is what the costing is for council.
That was the original costing.
That's the costing that's in the amended recommendation.
Three staff members.
Councillor, oh, you're right, councillor Vincent?
Through your chair.
Have you finished? Yep.
Through your chair. So these are, like, they're only estimates.
Sorry, mayor, just councillor Burke with your microphone.
A lady from north of here told me, microphone. I think if, moving forward, if they decide to offer 10 more hands to help out or we find ways to be more efficient or things might work, this could drop significantly. So it's only a ballpark estimate really at this stage.
It's a maximum. It's the maximum.
Yeah, yeah. But it could, like, things could change, it'd be evolving, I suppose.
I just had one question remaining, sorry. It's about the temporary fence. Does council currently own the temporary fence or would that be a higher arrangement?
Through your mayor councillor, we do own temporary fencing that the club would utilise.
Do I have any questions online?
No, I'm fine, thank you.
All good, thank you.
Okay, with that, I'll ask for a mover. If there's no more questions.
No, I'm prepared to move.
Councillor Flynn?
As per the recommendation of the officer that council won, note the request from, I'm having trouble reading up there. Note the request from the Roma Rugby Union Football Club requesting support for the delivery of its Play It Our Way project at Gullis Fox Park. Two, provide in-kind assistance to the project to the maximum value of $22,918, including A, the waiver of disposal piece for the cricket pitch, B, waiver of building and planning development fees, C, fence removal, D, temporary fencing, E, assistance with irrigation installation, F, assistance with turf and stolen laying. Three, provide financial assistance for contractor works to the maximum value of $28,700, including A, tree removal, B, stormwater management plan, C, flood study, D, survey. Four, fund the project by creating a new work order titled In Kind Assistant Contributions, Roma Rugby Union Play Our Way Project with an estimated cost of $51,618. B, transferring $22,000 from Santos Festival of Rugby Work Order 22986. C, transferring $21,393 from Emergency Management Operation Roma Work Order 18034. And six, be formally acknowledged by the Roma Rugby Union Football Club across all project communications, signage, media releases and at community and sporting events associated with the project.
Do I have a second?
I'm happy to second. Just got a question through your chair to officer Georgie. Does that contingency, that just means that they'll have to, if there's something else comes up, they'll just have to come back with another request? So it's not a?
Yep. So suppose as the current policy, if the request is up to $5,000, the director can approve that. If it's above $5,000, it'll come back to the council table for consideration.
Yeah, I'm happy to second it.
I've got a follow-up question on that. Would that, because they've already been given in kind, would that be an additional $5,000 that would be?
Just can't hear, sorry, mayor, whoever's speaking.
Sorry, Cam, I was just asking, yeah, if they asked again that it would be approved on a local level, even though they've already been given considerable amount of funds, would the consideration be put in there that with the contingency, which I'm fine with being, like, I'm happy with that being taken out, that they, you know, think about leaving some?
I'm happy to leave it in there, but my advice is that from in-kind jobs that we do not need to have a contingency base in there.
I'm happy to leave it out.
You too, I agree.
It's okay.
I'm happy to leave it in there, but just.
Okay, so I've got a mover and a second. Would you like to speak councillor?
Yeah, I'd like to thank all the councillors for the way they've embraced this project. I'd like also to thank the staff for the way that they've gone out of their way to try and get this project to fruition. I'd like to congratulate the Roma Rugby Union Football Club on their foresight in obtaining a grant of $750,000, which in this day and age, with the exception of swimming pools, is pretty well unheard of. I believe that this will not only enhance the participant playing facilities, but also enhance the entrance to the town of Roma, which is in desperate need of enhancement in that particular area. It has been council or my plan as far as portfolio head to encourage community sporting not-for-profit groups to apply for grants. And the rugby union club have, by getting this grant, gone a long way towards that. Some of the work involved in this project, including stormwater management and flood study, are of benefit to the total community, not just the rugby union fraternity or the users in that particular precinct. It's of benefit to the ratepayers and council and should be appreciated as such, not just to the applicant. I'm very happy to support this project and hope to see that income to fruition in the timeframe that may be expected.
Thank you. Anyone against? Anyone else like to speak against? Councillor Brumpton?
Whilst acknowledging that it is a large grant, I can't find myself voting for this because some of the amounts the sporting club had agreed to do in the meeting that we had with them, like the fence removal, which is a significant dollar figure in there. And I know we're approving to a maximum, but we're actually listing the fence removal as one of the things that we're doing. I'm disappointed that the club had received notification of the grant back in December, but have left it till the 11th hour to have council scrambling to try and see what we can do, moving money from places and moving staff. So I can't support it on that basis for the amounts given.
Thank you. Anyone else for councillor Burke?
There were, I had some concerns, but I think the staff have done an awesome job of going back and negotiating with the club.
Just your microphone councillor Burke, please.
There's another one there.
There you go. Councillor O'Neill, you'll be right now. I think, I agree with councillor Flynn, not only the entrance to town, getting that whole complex, sporting complex up and running, but I think it also gives the head start for the Santos Festival of Rugby next year when, I know on the previous one was a great spectacle, but I don't think the field was quite where it should be. And I think this will make it an even bigger spectacle moving forward. And I think that is one of the biggest money spinners we have in the region when they do come to town. So I think as well as junior rugby league will hopefully take the advantage of this as well. But yeah, I think it's only an estimate, a lot of these figures. And I think hopefully with a bit of extra support from the club and some initiatives moving forward from our staff, I think that we can cut that figure down. Once again, thanks to all the staff for getting this forward.
Thank you. Anyone else against? Councillor Davis?
I do, I have struggled with this one because it is such a, it's a great project. It's $750,000 into the entrance, as councillor Flynn and councillor Burke has said. While they are estimated prices quoted today, we're still approving that money. It is, I would have hoped that a financially sustainable club, that union would have come with a bit of skin in the game to be able to take away that tree removal. I don't think, I don't think that the ratepayers should pay for the tree removal. And as well as councillor Brumpton said, I don't think I can support this motion today. I'd be very happy to see an amended motion for in-kind assistance as that was the standing resolution that the club said that they would, that we've resolved to assist the club with, just not the financial contributions.
Anyone else like to speak for? Anyone else like to speak against? Councillor Vincent?
Yeah, I'm gonna speak, vote against this one today. I too have struggled and I congratulate the club on getting the $750,000. As councillor Flynn said, that's an amazing effort on their behalf. I am disappointed that it has been left to the last minute to come to council. These are significant funds that we've been looking for to do this. I understand the stormwater and the flood study and the survey and I'm more than happy to probably have supported that. When we see our small clubs, you know, pitching in, you know, like more dollar figures, I suppose. But yeah, I'm voting against it today.
Okay. Anyone else like to speak for?
I'm gonna speak against it as well. And I like the other councillors that are voting against it. I'm happy for them to have the money as well. I just think the in-kind is enough. I think the dollar value for the rest of it. And the fact that they, as we've just said, they've come at the last hour for this and we've scrambled and I don't have my, I don't have, I mean, I know they came for a briefing and sadly I had to leave that halfway through. But I just, I just feel that it's just all too quick and it's all too fast and I just, I can't catch up with it. So I'm happy for us to give as much in-kind as we've got there. Again, the fence removal, they did say they could do that themselves. So for me today, I'll be not supporting this motion either. Would anyone else like to speak?
Yeah, I'll speak.
Councillor Hancock?
I'm gonna speak, yeah, I'm gonna speak in support of the motion. And I do acknowledge that it is, it has been a very hard decision to make. The reason I'm gonna support it is because of a lot of what councillor Flynn has said. A grant for $750,000 to come into our community is significant. And whilst I am disappointed that the project has been put on, you know, is the last minute coming to council and asking for our assistance, I do think that it is worthwhile and worth the money to invest in our own facility because we do own that ground and so we will be enhancing that facility and we will be enhancing our entrance to a town. I do think it has got an overall community support. And whilst I don't agree with the timing and I wish we had a bit more time to be able to nut it out, because I think we probably could have come to a happy medium where most councillors feel a bit comfortable, we don't have that time. And so therefore I am gonna support it because I think in the long run, the economic development, the economic benefit that'll come to our community is well worth it. And I do think that we can, and as the officers have done, have been able to find the budget. I am acknowledging that we do take from something else to be able to give to this project. But as a council, we have done this many times and I guess it is just a priority at this moment. And I'm happy to put this in to go towards a $750,000 grant for our community. So I'll be supporting it today on those bases.
Thank you. Councillor O'Neill?
Thanks, mayor. I'll speak in favour, I'm gonna support this today largely for the, you know, the same reasons that councillor Hancock has just expressed. And that's not discounting the contributions made by my colleagues that are not gonna support this today. I respect your view and I can see how you've got to, where you've got to, given all the information that's in front of us. And particularly that this would have been far better to be dealt with earlier in the year or late last year, yeah, in terms of discussions with the rugby club. But for me, it's the bigger picture. You know, last term we contributed dollars towards the other field in the lead up to the sevens and the Santos Rugby Festival. And, you know, that money whilst it got through, you know, and assisted those two to events over those, you know, those years, it still hasn't got the field to the standard at which it needs to be. And, you know, the contribution that's come through a grant of some $750,000, already been, you know, commented on, that needs to be acknowledged. And it would have been unlikely for council to have been able to be awarded a grant of that size and potentially may not have been the highest priority with other assets across the region needing attention from council. And so I think a small contribution from us, acknowledging that we're taking it, you know, from potentially others, a small contribution for the return on that particular investment, I think is worthy of, you know, why I'll be supporting it today. And hopefully this gets the field to that high standard and, you know, continues to improve the entrance to Roma from the east.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak? Councillor Seerock?
Yeah, it's a tough one. You know, I'm very sitting on the fence. It's, it seems to be down to the wire. I'm, again, so I appreciate these guys applied and got this grant money. Regardless, I'm just, in the background, I'm still happy with the in-kind assistance. And to me, I don't wanna not see this project go ahead. You know, I wouldn't like them to see the money be given back. And at any stage, I've seen council, you know, contribute to this and pull out all stops to help. Because we're not in a, you know, a position to let, give back grant money, you know. We need every economic benefit we can get for our country towns. I just share some disappointment that these, you know, the club didn't come to us earlier, you know, in the past. This is nine months later or nearly 10 months later after they actually got the grant, that we are kind of coming down to the 11th hour. But also to go backwards from here, I mean, I look around the room and, you know, look at the council wages we've probably spent in just getting to this point. And I don't wanna go backwards from here either. So I'll be speaking in support of this, you know, motion today as well.
Thank you. Councillor Flynn, would you like to sum up?
Yeah, I'd like to sum up. I just, I guess I'd probably take a little bit of blame for the fact that this has taken so long to come to us. The fact that we did meet with the rugby club back in February and a sports portfolio level. And the fact that we probably haven't got or had all the details of the grant, not particularly the amount of money, but the amount of what the grant was going to be about and what jobs were needed to conclude this particular matter. And obviously it wasn't until last Tuesday or Monday evening prior to that last meeting that we had some tacit agreement from the Cricket Association to be involved with it. So while sharing some of the problems with regard to the lateness of coming to us, I also sympathise with the members of the rugby club in getting it and also sympathise with our staff because they've been the meat in the sandwich of this particular matter. And I'm going, going to say that I'm totally happy to support it and support the fact that we're putting $750,000 into our community.
Thank you. On that note, we'll go to the vote. All those in favour?
Yes.
Yes.
Against? Against, five four. On that note, I'll close the meeting at four thirty two and thank you all. Noting that we have two councillors online, councillor Hancock and councillor O'Neill. Special meeting on the seventeenth of September, item number three point one, proposed adjustment to 2025 meeting schedule, ordinary meeting commencement time for the 25th of September 2025. Councillor Brumpton?
I move that council adjust the meeting commencement from nine AM to one PM for the ordinary meeting on the 25th of September 2025.
Seconda councillor Seiright, like to speak councillor?
Just acknowledging that we're changing the start date of the meeting so that we can all attend a community sporting expo in Roma on the morning.
Thank you, anyone else like to speak? Let's go the vote, all those in favour?
Yes.
Nine zero. I'll now close the meeting at four thirty six and thank you all for your attendance.